Okay, well, we, uh, good evening, everyone. I see that we have a forum, so I will call this meeting to order. Today is August the 11th, 2021, and this is a reconvened special session of the Bloomington Common Council that was continued from August 4th, 2021. Would a clerk please call the rolls?
Councilmember Ralu.
I'm here.
Bolin.
Here.
Rosenbarger.
Here.
Scambleri.
Here.
Sims.
Here.
Flaherty.
Here.
Piedmont Smith.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
And Sandberg.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, always a pleasure to be present and serve with my colleagues. Moving on through the agenda, we'll now move to Agenda Semation. This evening, we will continue with the agenda that's been carried forward from last week's meeting. Copies of today's agenda and meeting materials are available electronically on the council's website, and that address is bloomington.in.gov backslash council, bloomington.in.gov backslash council. From that main homepage, click on the Meetings and Documents button and scroll down to today's date to find the agenda and meeting packet. Last week, the council began conducting public hearings on eight ordinances proposing the annexation of certain territory into the city of Bloomington. Each item is titled: An Ordinance of the City of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana: Annexing Territory to the City of Bloomington, placing the same within the corporate boundaries thereof, and making the same a part of the city of Bloomington. Now, the ordinances individually is Ordinance 17-09 proposes the annexation of Area 1A, Southwest A, Bloomington Annexation. Next, Ordinance 17-10 proposes the annexation of Area 1B, Southwest B, Bloomington Annexation. The next ordinance is 17-11 proposes the annexation of Area 1C, Southwest C, Bloomington Annexation. Next is Ordinance 17-12 proposes the annexation of Area 2, Southeast Bloomington Annexation. Next is Ordinance 17-13 proposes the annexation of Area 3, North Island, Bloomington Annexation. Next, Ordinance 17-14 proposes the annexation of Area 4, Central Island, Bloomington Annexation. Next, Ordinance 17-15 proposes the annexation of Area 5, South Island, Bloomington Annexation. And lastly, Ordinance 17-17 proposes the annexation of Area 7, North Bloomington Annexation. Maps of each of these areas are included in the meeting packet. Once we conclude the public hearing on these eight ordinances, the council will discuss scheduling matters before adjournment. Before resuming the public hearing, I'd also like to give a brief explanation of how today's meeting will function. This public hearing is a required part of the annexation process where interested parties have the opportunity to testify as to the proposed annexations. Not sooner than 30 days and not longer than 60 days following the completion of this public hearing, the council may vote to approve or deny the annexation ordinances. The council will not deliberate or vote on any of the ordinances at tonight's meeting. There will not be an opportunity for a back-and-forth dialogue between members of the public and the council. Rather, this meeting is an opportunity for individuals who have not spoken, who have not already spoken during the public hearing last week, to comment on the proposed annexations. Beyond speaking at this meeting today, members of the public are welcome to submit written comments to the council by emailing council@bloomington.in.gov. The email address again is council@bloomington.in.gov or by mailing comments to the office of the Common Council, 401 North Norton Street, Suite 110, Bloomington, Indiana, ZIP Code 47404. I'd also like to remind folks that a time limit of three minutes per speaker will apply to comments today. Individuals who did not comment last week that would like to speak today will be able to comment on as many of the ordinances as they wish during the one three-minute comment period. We will display a speaker timer in order to help folks see how much time has remained. The time color will change from green to orange, and a tone will sound at 30 seconds left. The color will change to red, and another tone will sound when your time is up. Here's a quick demo, so you can know what to expect. Mr. Lucas. Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry, just got a little over-lit language to me in the chat, so I will continue. For those attending the meeting tonight that would like to speak and who didn't comment at last week's meeting, please use the raise hand function to indicate you would like to speak. You can find the raise hand button in your meeting control bar. That's here at the bottom of the screen. Depending on the device you're on, you may need to click the Participants button from the menu bar and then click Raise Hand. Some mobile devices might require you to click the More button and then click Raise Hand. Finally, if you've called into the meeting via telephone, you can raise your hand by dialing *9. Once your hand is raised, please leave it raised, as lowering it will move you to the end of the list. We will ask speakers to unmute one at a time. Individuals will have audio enabled, but not video. And if none of those options work for you, you can also send a message via chat to the meeting host to indicate that you'd like to speak. With that, we will now resume the public hearing. Again, if you would like to speak, please let us know now.
And as folks start to raise their hands, I will try to read out the next five names at a time, so folks can know when they're coming up. The first five names I see are Lee Jones, Ed, and I'm not sure if Council President Sims, if you're okay with me asking folks to please state your full name when you comment, and also it would be helpful if you live in one of the particular areas for annexation, or you are commenting toward a particular area, please let us know that as well. So the first five names I see are Lee Jones, Ed, Eric Warren, Barbara Frey, and Tony Suttle. And Lee Jones is up first, and should be able to unmute.
Thank you. Good evening, council.
Good evening, Ms. Jones. How are you?
I'm doing well.
Thank you. You have three minutes, please.
Thank you. I am a county commissioner, and I want to thank you for continuing this public hearing through tonight to give those of us who didn't have a chance last week an opportunity to speak. This morning, the county commissioners read a statement at their meeting in opposition to annexation. It's too long for me to read in three minutes. There were multiple reasons for opposition, but I'm going to focus on one that is of particular importance, and that is criminal justice reform. We recently received a study that made it very clear that our jail is inadequate for our population. It's very important to do everything that we can to reduce the numbers of inmates in the jail before considering building a new one. This is going to require close cooperation with the community to create programs and initiatives to keep people out of jail. It will be necessary for the county to support these efforts, both financially and with personnel. ARPA may provide some of the funding necessary, but it wouldn't be wise to use that for personnel needs since it is a one-time fund. The county funds that will be most impacted by annexation are the funds that pay for operations and personnel, which will be needed for this effort with our jail. If it appears that we are not doing anything about this situation, it's most likely that the feds will come in and require us to pay for and build a much larger new jail, certainly much larger than we believe is necessary. They will give us a date by which it must be completed, and if it is not done in time, there will be a massive daily fine for until it is completed. These will be expenses the entire community must pay, but they can probably be avoided if the county has the ability to show sincere efforts to reduce the jail population. This annexation undermine the county's ability to deal with this situation, so I hope you will take the situation very much in consideration as you're thinking about annexation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Jones. Who's next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Ed, who should now be able to unmute.
You're welcome.
Hi, and how are you?
I'm fine. Uh, I just want to read one. Excuse me.
I said, we hear you fine. You have about three minutes.
Uh, I just want to read a paragraph that I put together, and it's so true. And if I, I'll just start it now. Most people work their entire life looking to be comfortable and secure. Nothing is more true than us senior citizens. There comes a working, there comes a point in our working lives when we look at retirement and the planning starts. Where do we want to retire? What can we afford? There is, of course, different levels of affordability. Once the determination of what will be comfortable and affordable, we set our sights on this final endeavor. We then start a search of what is available and fits into our budget. That's what us senior citizens do. Their income is fixed to a degree. We don't receive annual raises. We don't receive bonuses, and we don't have a 401 any longer. We know we need to live and spend accordingly. When the government decides to annex homes and land with dramatic increases in taxes and budgets, our plan disappears, and we enter into a financial panic mode. When we were young, didn't have a large income, and we were careful of our spending. Seniors are not looking back, or when we were young, we're looking ahead to ensure that we'll be comfortable for the rest of our lives, and the annexation will definitely affect many, many seniors. I thank you for your time. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Ed. Can you, can you share your full name for the record, please?
Ed Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Have a good evening. Uh, Mr. Lucas, who do we have next, please?
Next up is Eric Warren.
Hi, good evening. Um, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, sir. You have about three minutes.
All right. I am commenting on the annexation. My name is Eric Warren. I'm a resident of Carst Farm Subdivision in Van Buren Township, part of Annexation Area 1A. While the evolution of a city and the surrounding area might one day create a sensible opportunity for annexation of additional land into the city, this is not that time. Mayor Hamilton has not been an acceptable steward of the funds he already has access to. Providing him with more funds will not solve any existing problems, but rather create new problems and exacerbate existing issues. He installs traffic calling devices, otherwise known as medians, and already two narrow streets that then barricades to lifesaving emergency vehicles. He builds parks and trails only to allow crime to spread into what is supposed to be a family-friendly area. Further, the landscaping is then neglected to allow weeds and scrub to overtake. Many residents are still financially reeling from the lockdowns. Mayor Hamilton apparently can't be bothered with other people's problems, or he's completely tone deaf to the issue. He wants to strap additional payments on the 14,000-plus people so he can gain access to more money. Now is the time for the government to hold steady on spending, just like we must, especially while it's bad enough to warrant renewed mask mandates and possibly more restrictions in the near and even distant future. Mayor Hamilton promises access to policing. How? 14,000-plus additional residents cannot be served by an already understaffed police department, a department that was additionally understaffed by converting several officer positions into social worker positions. Most of the areas being considered for annexation are still not directly contiguous to the city boundaries. Mayor Hamilton is needing to take a great deal of agriculture and undeveloped scrubland to reach the populated areas that provide taxable property he so desires. This is not fitting with the proper evolution of natural city growth. Mayor Hamilton has now said to not consider Area 7 for annexation because of resident input and facts on the grounds, on the ground. Well, here is resident input and facts on the ground for Area 1A. The mayor needs to take too much farm scrubland to connect us to the city, and we don't want to be part of this money grab. Therefore, we urge the city council to reject the proposed annexation. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Warren. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Barbara Frey.
Hello, my name is Barbara Frye. I am a native of Bloomington, born in 1952. Thank you for the opportunity to address the impact that annexation would have on five parcels included in Area 2 of the proposed annexation plan. Three of the five parcels are owned by the Frye family, and one each is owned by our adjacent neighbors, Jocelyn Bowie and Jeremy James. I find the inclusion of these five parcels in the annexation plan perplexing, as the benefit derived by the city would be negligible. And to us, the promised carrot of expanded city services in exchange for our tax increase seems problematic at best. We find the services delivered by the county to be quite adequate. In addition, in 2018, with no city sewer service likely for the foreseeable future, and still unlikely for the foreseeable future, we had an entirely new septic system installed to the tune of $16,000, a considerable investment. The Frye family home is located at the junction of Smith Road and Rogers Road. With the exception of a small amount of land around our house, all of the Frye family acreage is in conservation easement with the Sycamore Land Trust. It is permanently protected and undevelopable. Additionally, our land and the Bowie's land borders on a large area to the east that is characterized by steep-sided ravines that is undevelopable per Monroe County codes. Therefore, the city would not be able to expand east of us due to the nature of this land. The seven properties that are adjacent to our home site to the north are not included in the annexation plan. How are these boundaries determined? The carving out of the five parcels in question seems rather arbitrary. We do not see any benefit in being annexed by the city. Our land is not a bridge to any developable land. The city would derive minimal revenue from these five parcels. I do not want our land, which is under conservation easement, divided up between city and county jurisdictions. We want it all to remain in Monroe County. I respectfully request that the Frye, Bowie, and James parcels in Area 2 be removed from the annexation plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Mrs. Frye. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up, and I do apologize if I mispronounce any names, I believe Tony Sutil should be up next, and can now unmute.
Hello? I'm here. President Sim, council members, can you hear me?
I can, sir. Can you pronounce your full name, and then you have three minutes.
My name is Tony Satili, and I am a resident in the proposed annexation area 1A, Van Buren Township, the Carst Farm subdivision. We are truly a rural neighborhood within the county, as we are surrounded by soybean and cornfields to the north and east, Grandview Elementary, Carst Farm Park, and the Monroe County Fairgrounds to the south, and the Monroe County Airport to the west. If you were to review the 2017 annexation study area map for Zone 1A, you will see that our neighborhood sits alone within the boundaries of Carst Farm Park west of Van Wright Road. I feel that a closer evaluation of this map and our neighborhood clearly shows that we are well within the county and should not be considered as part of the city annexation. Our neighborhood already has sidewalks, water, and sewer, various trash services, and snow removal, and our unique street also has a cul-de-sac at both ends of Hank's Crossing, making it a road for residents only and not a thoroughfare. The only thing that I can see happening and becoming part of the city is a substantial tax increase, and I ask you now for what? Currently, the Bloomington Police Department is overworked because they are understaffed by a minimum of 40 officers, which means they can't even monitor and protect the current city limits, which to me is reasoning enough that the city is not prepared to protect an increase in territory. Though I understand the reasoning of annexation, I believe the lines that have been drawn are stretched farther than they should be, and that the city needs to get control of the current city limits before any attempt is made to expand. The annexation is being forced upon county residents, and this comes at a very poor time for many of these residents still suffering from the effects and impact from the pandemic. Financial planners project that it could be fourth quarter 2020, uh, 2023, or first quarter 2024, before the country returns to any normalcy as we knew it in 2019. If annexation is that important of a topic, then maybe it should be something that the citizens can vote for, maybe in a special election. Back in 2017, Cook Medical, that is located over two miles north of the Hank's Crossing neighborhood, made a deal to avoid annexation by using money to improve the abandoned GE building. Maybe the city council should reevaluate and reconsider the entire annexation zoning proposal, or maybe you should just have the boundary for Area 1A stop at the Cook Medical Building, since they clearly have remained part of the county. As of last meeting, Council Samberg brought up the point that this decision that has to be made regarding annexation is crucial. I thank you for the time and consideration regarding this matter, and I thank you for this additional public hearing. Based on all that you have heard, I trust you will make the right decision for everyone.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Satili. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Uh, our next four folks up, and at the moment I just see four more hands raised, are Barry Nolling, Pam Snyder, Linda Summit, and Jacqueline Porter. And as I go through those folks, if there is anyone else that wishes to speak tonight, I'll just remind you, you can do, you can indicate that you'd like to speak by using the raise hand function, which should be in your control bar. Some folks may need to click on the Participants button first, and then click Raise Hand. Folks on mobile devices may need to click the More button in your control bar, and then you can find the Raise, uh, Raise Hand button there. And I believe if you have called in on a phone line, you can use *9 to indicate that you'd like to speak. And our next speaker is Barry Nolling, who should be able to unmute now.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
I'm sorry, I was muted myself. I can hear you fine. Can you please state your full name, and then you have three minutes.
Barry Nalling, Garden Acres.
Thank you.
I'm, I came to the meeting last week, right straight from work, and it had got shut down to the public for some odd reason, so I'm now on my four hours, fourth hour of trying to speak my three minutes in two weeks, because two, last week I wasted two hours, and this week I wasted another two hours. But my addition is one of the older additions in Bloomington. Most, if not 75% of the houses are on septic, and some will not be able to hook up to sewer system when and if it ever happens, because most of their septic systems are in the backyard, and a lot have basements which would be lower than your sewer system being installed. So that means you would be spending a lot more funds on issues that could be better used for, let's say, bringing in businesses for your mixed-use buildings that are all uptown, to bring in more taxes for the city to spend on theirself. Plus, my taxes right now, if it came into effect, would be $600 more a year, which I, I look at very unfair for anybody to have to pay more and not get anything more in value right up front. I think there should be a vote on dropping this during the pandemic completely for the whole county until this is totally over with, because everybody is still struggling and trying to get caught up. And we cannot vote for people in the city for some odd reason. Seems how you guys get 60% of our county taxes that we pay on our taxes now, that you cannot financially use to your best efforts for the people in the city. Thank you, and have a nice evening.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Nalling. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Is Pam Snyder.
Hello?
Hello, how are you? We can hear you fine. Can you state your full name, and you have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Pamela Tier Snyder. I am here to represent my 88-year-old mother, Velma Tier, and three of my four daughters, who are property owners here in Monroe County, each in a different quadrant that are being annexed. First of all, I went to your meeting years ago at the showers building about annexation, and each city department had a table with a representative. I went to each and asked what they were giving us for this increase in taxes. One by one, they said nothing would change. Eventually, I was directed to the public safety person there. It was a Mr. Moore who had just been hired, and as he explained to me, and others started to gather around, 83% of this increase would be going to public safety. My father once worked for the police department, so I have respect for them, but I live in the county, as did my father and my children, and we did this for a reason. We like living in the county. We like our fire protection. We like our sheriff's department just fine. How are the police we have now, as everyone has already stated, who are short 40 officers, and I was told that years ago, so that's not something currently, who cannot cover what we already have, be able to cover an additional 6,000 more properties, 14,400 more residents, over 9,000 acres that spread from one corner of this county to the other? People in the city, as well as people in the county who are not being annexed, need to realize this is going to affect everyone, including them. This is going to cause higher rents and apartments as taxes increase. City services will be watered down due to too many residents needing services at the same time. Services may be cut altogether because priorities set, obviously, not very well. While we got a new city park, they weren't able to pay for more police for what we needed downtown, which now looks like a prison around the Bloomington Post Office because of the homeless situation. If we can't handle one block away from downtown, how are we going to be able to handle an entire county? Monroe County services are going to be cut by $2,737,526 alone. This goes to everybody in the county, not just the people that are in the city. We need to realize that all property owners in this entire county are going to be affected. That's Ellettsville, Steinsville, Bloomington, Unionville, Smithville, all of us. That's Ellisville, Steinsville, Bloomington, Unionville, Smithville, all of us. And it's going to force many elderly residents like my mother on fixed incomes to have to sell their own homes. Because they can't afford the taxes on them. You need to vote no to annexation now. Because the remonstrance is going to come and the people of Bloomington are going to tell you no. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Snyder. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Linda Summit.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you fine. Um, can you pronounce her? Can you give us your full name? You have about three minutes.
Okay, I'm Linda Summit and I'm in area two, Clear Creek. And I, um, I have lived here for forty-three years. And I have been able to live and thrive here in this county as a county resident, just fine. And now I am a widow as of nine years and I'm still doing okay, but I am on a fixed income. As many people are here in this area. And, um, over the last few weeks, I have, uh, walked in this neighborhood, talking to people. And trying to get petitions signed, which I have managed to get quite a few, but there's been, oh, lots of questions. And concerns from the neighbors and, um. One of the big ones are what's going to happen to some of the people that are already, um, helping. With, uh, private services as trash removal, et cetera. What would happen to their jobs and what, what will they do? So I'm not, I'm not so sure about that myself, but, um. I do agree with everything that Ed had said earlier. And I was going to, um, mention some of those things myself. But right now I just wanted to know, to let you know that we in this area are concerned with what will happen. Uh, to us and also many other concerns. Many people here have just put in new septic tanks. And I know I was talking to one man on Church Lane, fourteen thousand is what he put in one, just, I think he said two years ago. But we do reject annexation and we would like to know how to digitally sign to remonstrate. Do I need to continue to talk for three minutes?
Oh, no, you don't have to. We're, I was just trying to be respectful, see if you were finished or not. Thank you very, very much for your comments.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is Jacqueline Porter.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So first I wanted to say that, um, I was very disappointed to have, um, left my job. Last week to drive downtown after checking the internet to make sure the meeting was still going on. I drove downtown to the showers building. There was a note on the door saying that the meeting had been moved to Zoom. By the time I got home and got on Zoom and I was let in, the meeting had already stopped. Almost two hours before the scheduled time that it was done. Now, I'm really disappointed that this happened. I recognize that, um, I heard from, uh, Julie Thomas, the county commissioner, that there was no more people waiting to speak. But guys, when there's no more kids in my classroom that have a question, that doesn't mean I get to quit and go home two hours early. So I'm just wanted to say, I'm really disappointed with that behavior. I appreciate the fact that you have us meeting today, but I'm disappointed you left two hours early. And especially that you did not put the change of meeting online so we could have known, because I would have been speaking last week. Second, I am a current and, and longtime resident of section four for the annexation. I've been living here since nineteen ninety-three. My husband's grandma bought this house in Shady Acres, new in nineteen eighty-nine. She specifically bought this house because she knew that if something happened to grandpa, she would not be able to afford rent on the east side of town. So, within a month or two after she bought it, lo and behold, grandpa died. She, you know, but she was set up in a situation where she could afford the housing. Our landlords, Roger and Judy Stags, have worked very hard to keep of our lot rent low. If this annexation goes through, and I recognize we're an island, but if this annexation goes through. Our lot rent stands, their Roger and Judy taxes are going to go up at least seventy-six hundred dollars. Which they're gonna force pass on to us. Our lot rent stands to go up at least sixty-five dollars a month, but I wouldn't be shocked if it doesn't go up closer to a hundred. That doesn't count that my property taxes on my house going up as well. So, for, and I live with a lot, a lot of old people in this neighborhood. There's about a hundred of them back here. And they cannot stand, they're not going to be able to afford to have their, um, taxes go up. Over eight hundred dollars a year. That's not fair to these people on fixed incomes. And Bloomington's all about affordable housing right now and you're about to pay a lot, a lot of people and that's not okay. But in addition, a quick addition, the fact that with MC, with the public library getting ready to build a new library. And you're getting ready to take two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year away from them, that's terrible. And half a million dollars away from Monroe County Public Schools and forty thousand dollars a year away from Richland Bean Blossom. It is not okay. We're not Indianapolis. You do not need the whole county like Indianapolis has Marion County. Thank you so much for your time.
For your comments. Who's next, Mr. Lucas?
Our next three folks and, uh. Again, I'll just take this opportunity to remind anyone else that would like to speak. You can indicate your desire to do so by raising your hand in Zoom. You can click on the participants button at, in your control bar to find the raise hand option. Uh, some, uh, mobile users may need to click the more button and then click raise hand from there. And finally, if you've called in with, uh, from a telephone, I believe you can dial star nine to raise your hand. And again, this is for folks who didn't comment at last week's meeting. Uh, the next four, uh, excuse me, three folks that I see are Thomas Schwant, uh, Don Creek and Ken. And, uh, Thomas Schwant, I believe, is unmuted.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Swant, Mr. Swant?
Yes.
I'm sorry, before we get started, um, our records indicate that someone from this account spoke last week.
That's correct.
Okay, was that you, sir? We only allow one.
You, you must, you must be kidding me. You mu- you must be kidding me. So we, we only can say one thing?
Yes, sir, this is the same meeting that was from Wednesday.
Oh, my God.
And I read that in the beginning. I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry, that, 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 that is fairly undemocratic, wouldn't you think? Wouldn't you think? So.
No, I'm sorry, I think we gave everyone a chance to speak.
Yeah, but are there people, are there people in the queue behind me that I'm holding up here, sir?
Sir, I'm sorry, we only allow you to speak.
Unbelievable.
Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Unbelievable, sir, unbelievable.
Sorry, sir.
Next up is Don Creek.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, Mr. Creek. Can you pronounce your full name and you'll have three minutes?
Don Creek. Uh, my name is Don Creek. My wife and I live in one A. And I'm one of the many folks that have gone door to door providing information on this proposed forced annexation. And you've received many of our assigned position petitions that promise remonstration if it becomes necessary. I listened to the widow who has lived in her home since nineteen seventy. She now fears being forced from her home due to the outlandish increase in property taxes this annexation would bring. And I talked with retirees on fixed income. Also the working age couples with children and MCCSC and young couples with toddlers and infants. And they see the loss of income for the school system, the library and our fire service. Not so long ago, our lawns held some Biden and both some Trump signs. And even with this mix of residents, I have found no one who felt the mayor's forcing of annexation would benefit any resident of Monroe County. Two did ask whether the mayor would be transferring the used needles, his homeless community and his gun violence out to us. The mayor's understaffed, underpaid and overworked police department can't provide us with prompter service and what we enjoy with our sheriff's department. You can forget street lighting. The mayor did almost provide us with a sidewalk, but it simply ends. The construction of this sidewalk to nowhere required filling in part of a sinkhole. And this has worsened the stormwater and sewage flooding in our neighborhood. And now South Curry Pike becomes nearly impassable during heavy rain. Perhaps this city and stormwater sewage bonus that prevents us from using our bathrooms during heavy rain. Is why we pay higher water and stormwater fees. Perhaps our fees will fund the half dozen new parks and rec positions being advertised for Switchyard Park. The bus service won't improve since the city bus system can't keep to its own schedule. Due to the narrowed city streets blocked with planters and cement islands. In addition, Real Transit, a service of Area Ten Agency on Aging, had to transfer riders from the city buses. To provide service out to the Ivy Tech Tasses and Cook campuses. If a county resident needs a ride to their doctor, dialysis or simply to downtown. The call to Real Transit can provide door-to-door service at a fee similar to BT access. City trash service is not an improvement. If we want a more pickup day or to try to save a dollar a month, we can simply call a different provider. My three minutes are nearly up, but I believe you have heard from enough people to know what is in the best interest of all Monroe County taxpaying residents. Regarding this forced annexation, not now and definitely not this way. It is taxation without benefit and taxation without representation. Thank you for your time and your attention. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Have a good evening too, Mr. Creek. Thank you for your comments. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Ken.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, I hear you fine. Can you give us your, state your full name and then you have three minutes?
This is Ken Day and I'm a resident of area one B. And I know time's limited, so I'll just get to the executive summary. Number one, I urge you to vote no on the proposed annexation ordinances and particularly no. On ordinance seventeen dash ten, uh, which deals with area one B. Number two, it's taxation without representation. We have no elected representative in city government and will not be allowed to vote in city elections until twenty twenty-seven. Long after annexation. Just because state law permits involuntary annexation does not make it right. All of these ordinances should fail on this point alone, just based on moral and ethical principles. Number three, our taxes would increase about eighty percent. For tax years twenty and twenty, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. The county increased our taxes thirty-three percent and the stormwater increased a hundred and sixteen percent. There's no assurance that the county would decrease taxes due to the shift of acres into the city. On the contrary, annexation greatly decreases county revenue, so they'll probably look for ways to increase taxes. Number four, lack of real benefits. The proposed list of benefits is designed to tickle our ears. The only benefit that I can find is a price break on the sewer premium. The second thing we get are more rules, regulations, requirements, which are not benefits and are not needed. Number five, annexation causes a tremendous financial impact on other taxing units. Revenue reduction would occur for Monroe County, Monroe County and Richland Bean Blossom School Corporations, the library. The county's solid waste district, Monroe Fire Protection, Ellisville and the various townships. So the implication is that these units will raise taxes to compensate for lost revenues. Driving all properties in, up to the state cap on property taxes. Number six. There is not a sound explanation on why annexation needs to be done. The case for annexation has not been made. The publicity has been oriented around, it's good for us. It will strengthen Bloomington and it will help us prosper. The financial hit on taxpayers and on taxing units does not sound like it is good for us or will help us prosper. So in summary, annexation can be reduced to two points, money and control. So I urge you to vote no on these ordinances and specifically no on ordinance seventeen dash ten. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Thank you. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up is the screen name Dad, who should now be able to unmute.
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you fine, sir. Can you state your full name and then you'll have about three minutes?
Well, I will in a minute. Now that I know that you can hear me.
Yes, sir.
I am going to read a short and direct speech. Hello, my name is Paul Green and I am, excuse me, I am from area seven. I am here to ask the city council for a motion, a second and a vote. To remove all of area seven from the annexation process. After the closure of this hearing and regular business starts. The council is aware that area seven has ninety percent signed petitions to show. That the area is serious about being, not being annexed. Area seven does not meet the state requirements for annexation. And we can win this fight if it goes so far as to remonstrate. What I am asking for is that this city council give area seven the same consideration. They did area six in two thousand seventeen and remove area seven. I have read the press release from the mayor. But do not know if this is going to happen today or months from now. We are wait, wanting this to be done as soon as possible. Thank you again for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much for your comments, Mr. Green, um, Mr. Lucas, um, but before we go to check, I'd like to remind the public. That if there's anyone that would like to submit written comments to the council, you can do so by emailing. At this address, council@bloomington.in.gov. That's council@bloomington.in.gov. Thank you. Do we have any other speakers lined up, Mr. Lucas?
I don't see any additional requests at the moment. Uh, perhaps we could remind folks again, uh, if you'd like to comment and haven't done so already either last week or, uh, this evening, you can raise your hand. Uh, by clicking raise hand in your control bar. Uh, some folks may need to click the participants button to find the raise hand feature. Uh, if you're on a mobile device, you may need to click the more button to bring up the raise hand option. And finally, if you've called in, uh, on a telephone, I believe you can dial star nine to, uh, raise your hand that way. And if all of that fails, um, please, if you're able to send a message to, uh, the meeting host in chat. That you would like to comment, uh, we can acknowledge you that way as well. And I don't see any, any more requests at the moment. Uh, perhaps we can give it a minute or two.
Okay.
And I do see a, a hand that just went up from a, a phone number and. They should now be able to unmute.
Can you hear me?
I sure can. Can you state your full name and then you'll have about three minutes?
I'm Sam McHenry and I live in Van Guren Park, area one B. I have, I have, uh, unmuted to say that area one B, there are two sections of it and they seem very divided. I can't speak for the one B side that is on Roger Street. But on the west side of I sixty-nine, I can say that our neighborhood is. Uh, more isolated from Bloomington and we are very depend, independent with all of our, uh. You know, public services. Like trash and water and sewage. And we have no benefit from being annexed. That is all I have to say.
Thank you very much for your comments. Do we have anyone else on the line, Mr. Lucas?
Not that I see, no.
Okay, thank you. We'll pause just for a few seconds and give everyone else a chance.
Yes, I do see, uh, Matt like to comment and should now be able to unmute.
Good evening, my name is Matt Smith. I'm in area two. I just wanted to comment that I, uh, born and raised in Monroe County. Been in this county pretty much my entire life. Uh, I live just outside of city limits on a, on a lot that's about eight and a half acres. All of my surrounding neighbors are all unseptic. Uh, we're not going to get sewer brought in by this, so as many other people have commented, there is no benefit to us, only hindrances from additional restrictions, rules, and tax increases. But as everyone has commented, and I'm sitting here looking at the estimated revenue impact, Bloomington in year two is going to get over ten million dollars in additional revenue while Monroe County loses almost three million. The fire department loses half a million. Monroe County schools lose almost half a million. And all of this stuff, all of the comments that everyone has made about Mayor Hamilton and all of the forced rules and regulations and mandates from this city and the city council and the mayor's office, along with taking money from districts and institutions that can't afford that, have the money taken from them, is nothing more than just communism. And these sort of communistic policies has made me embarrassed to say that I am from this city. So whenever I go anywhere and somebody asks me where I'm from, I tell them I'm from Monroe County because I don't even want to admit that I'm from Bloomington. That's how pathetic this whole thing is. And this city council needs to grow a pair and tell Hamilton no and vote no against this annexation because that's what the residents want. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see one more. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Lucas.
I'm sorry. Uh, yes, next we have Rex Kurtz.
Can you hear me?
I sure can, Mr. Kurtz.
Yes, sir. Uh, my, uh, my wife and I comes and we live just south of Bachelor Middle School. I forget the number of that area, but we're in, uh, they're thinking about annexing us. Two years ago, when this subject first came up, I went down to the courthouse and asked how much more taxes I would pay if they were annexing me in the city. At that time, that was two years ago. At that time, they said it'd be six hundred dollars more. And that was two years ago, so I'm thinking now it'd be closer to seven hundred, maybe eight hundred dollars more uh, in, in taxes. And, uh, as I said, we live on fixed income and we don't need that kind of a raise. And, uh, that we, uh, we don't want to be annexed, uh, that we wouldn't get, we wouldn't get much if anything for it. And, uh, but that, i- if it goes up in six hundred, even just six hundred dollars, that is more than a fifty percent increase in taxes. Uh, that's not a, too bad a raise, but, uh, it is a bad raise. I'm trying to be facetious, but anyway, we don't, uh, we don't want annexed down here. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Kurtz. Who have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up, and I'll, I'll just remind folks again, uh, if, if you're not able to find the raise hand function, you can send a chat to the meeting host and let me know that way that you'd like to be called on and I will, uh, acknowledge you. Um, I've also gotten a message that some folks are finding the raise hand, uh, feature in their reactions, uh, bar, so. I believe next up is Eric Weigold. Weigold, you should now be able to unmute.
Hello, uh, Eric Weigold, Zone Four. Um, anyway.
You have about three minutes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, anyway, so annexation, um, I'm sure you're hearing a lot. I just popped in, but I'm sure you're hearing a lot about financial reason, reasons and whatnot for people in this area. Um, but also I think that first of all, we don't want annexed anyway for that reason. Then also we want to have the rights that we have out here. We don't think we'd get really the services that are being promised, nor do we want them like streetlights. We like it nice and quiet and the wildlife doesn't like lights and noise. But, uh, we've also gotten enough votes for a remonstrance if it even needs to get that far. So I think that the community has spoken just in the showing that we have enough votes to stop this as it is. But one of the problems I also see, if, in the event that this somehow did get voted through, I noticed that the people in these zones wouldn't, in Zone Four specifically, wouldn't have a chance to vote until after the next election, which I don't see as being appropriate if they're going to be taxed as part of the city, but unable to vote in city elections. So I think that that would, at the very least, as a show of good faith, need to be postponed. The effective date of the annexation that is postponed so that residents in this zone would be able to vote in the next election. I surrender my time.
Thank you, Mr. Weigold. Appreciate your comments. Who's next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is Steve Patterson.
Hi, I had one question. Well, I have several, but one of them is why you didn't put this at the, uh, uh, convention center? I mean, we're paying tons of money for that and it's hardly, I can't tell it's hardly ever used. The city and the county disagreed with where they were going to put the extension, so the city bought for five million dollars, there are Tom Bunker's building and, and the county's going the other side of the street on Walnut and tear down Napa building. It seems to be that you can't get your story straight. Um, but I, I don't know why you couldn't have had this meeting at the convention center. I'd be interested in hearing that because surely a great big convention center could have taken as many people as well, quite a few people anyway. Uh, the second, I, I, uh, I don't think people realize the bureaucracy of this city. It's just like soon at, uh, one, um, over the parking garage, they had every opportunity to get it. Then they hired outside counsel. They paid hundreds of thousands of dollars to beat him over the head. And it's, it's, uh, very much to his courage that he tried to fight the city because he was exactly right in his rights to do it. But this city would rather hire attorneys and beat you over the head than do the right thing. That's I mean, there's a reason why none of the attorneys in Bloomington want to deal with this city government. They just think it's way too expensive for what you get out of it. Um, my experience with the city has been nothing but bad. I was born here and I, I sure as hell am going to leave here before I get gone. And that's about it.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson, for your comments. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Jane Dole.
Hi, this is John Doe.
Hi, how are you next? How are you, Mr. Doe?
I'm doing well.
Good. You have about three minutes, sir.
I am a Bloomington city taxpayer at this moment. Bloomington businessman. And I've listened to all these people speak tonight. And not very many folks from Bloomington have spoke up. I don't know that a whole lot of us have paid much attention. But I don't understand why a proposal like this would not prompt the city government from the mayor's office to the council to ask us our opinion before this is even on the books. All these millions of dollars that have been spent without a single poll being taken from city residents to tell us whether this is something we were interested in or not. You know, in the last presentation in two thousand seventeen, it showed our taxes were going up. Now it says we're breaking even. That may be true dollar-wise, but our resources will be spread thinner. You see what our police department says? It's just not a good situation and it's none of your fault. None of you on the council put this presentation forward, but I am frustrated that the millions and millions of dollars have been spent without us having an opinion. So I'm not interested in this. I think it should go back to the drawing board.
Thank you for your comments. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Karen's PC.
Hi, uh, I'm assuming you can hear me now.
Yes, can you give us your full name and then you'll have three minutes?
Yes, uh, my name is Karen LaSella. I live in Section 1B and I would like to voice my opposition to the forced annexation for the same reasons you have heard repeatedly over and over again. I don't think I need to repeat them. Um, that's pretty much all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Who we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Eileen's iPhone.
Are you there? Screen name, Eileen's iPhone? I think, um, we'll just um, I have an understanding that we have a, a comment to be read from someone who can't exact access Zoom. Is that person available, Mr. Lucas?
Yes, give me a moment. Uh, I believe Jacqueline Porter, uh, mentioned that her neighbor wasn't able to access Zoom and wanted to, uh, comment on, uh, on her behalf or had a written statement. And I don't know if Ms. Porter is able to now unmute.
Yes, thank you for allowing me this opportunity for my neighbor. My neighbor's name is Susan Scales. Um, she has not only, um, been, uh, getting signatures on a petition, talking about how the residents of Shady Acres, who we do not own the land, but we are still against this, um, this annexation because as I said, our lot rent, because of the property taxes our, our property owners will face, will go up and in addition, our, the taxes on our houses will go up. But, um, Susan would like to point out that she is against these meetings only being on Zoom since the elderly and low-income people have too much difficulty using Zoom or may not even have a computer. Um, and as someone that I know, I don't believe she has a computer, um, at all, just a phone and is not um, readily knowledgeable of how to use Zoom. I feel like she is, she has an adequate point to bring up. Thank you.
Thank you very much, um, for helping your neighbor with her comments. Much appreciated. Mr. Lucas, who do we have next? Is Eileen's iPhone able to unmute themselves?
From our end, they should be able to. I'm not sure if they're having difficulty, uh, enabling their audio. While we give them a second, I'll just remind folks, uh, again, um, if you'd like to comment and haven't done so already, uh, you can raise your hand, uh, in your control panel. You may need to click the participants button and then, uh, click raise hand. Uh, some folks, you'll need to click the more button to find the raise hand function. Um, I've also, uh, some folks have said that they, uh, are able to find the raise hand function under the reactions button. So if all of that fails, um, uh, and again, if you've called in on, on a telephone, you should be able to dial star nine to raise your hand. And, uh, if all of that fails, you're able to send a chat into the meeting host to let me know that you'd like to comment. We can acknowledge you, uh, that way. And I don't see that, uh, Eileen's having any success on muting. And at the moment, I don't see any additional requests for comment.
Okay, thank you very much. And we'll take another pause or two to see if she can, or I'm sorry, that person can figure that out. Okay, Mr. Lucas, do we have anyone else in the queue?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you. I'm trying to pause a little bit before we move on into the agenda. We'll just pause a bit while longer.
Do you see, uh, two additional, uh, commenters?
I do.
And the first one up is Jeffrey. And Jeffrey, you'll, you'll need to unmute yourself, which you should now be able to do.
Can you hear us? Um, screen name Jeffrey. And are you able to unmute yourself? Okay, um, I don't know what the issue could be there. Um, do we have anyone else in the queue? Still have two waiting. Um, I'm assuming trying to unmute themselves.
Do have a request from Forrest Gafford to comment and should now be able to unmute.
Are you there, Mr. Gafford?
Looks like Mr. Gafford's unmuted, although I'm not sure uh, that his audio is connected. I don't know if he could try to, uh, reconnect. And I'll again remind folks, if, if you're having technical difficulties and can't comment uh, via Zoom, um, you are more than welcome to send written comments in, uh, to the council email account. Uh, council@bloomington.in.gov. And we will share, uh, all of the messages we receive with, with council members, with the administration and, uh, pass along any comments that we received that way. Let me see, Mr. Gafford, try once more.
Hello, can you hear me?
I sure can. Can you, uh, give us your full name and then you'll have about three minutes?
Yes, sir. Thank you. My name is Forrest Gafford and I live over close to Cars Farm Park in a small neighborhood. Um, across the street and some of my other neighbors have been on this call as well, um, to speak. Uh, I, as my neighbors are as well, opposed to this annexation. Um, I've heard many, many things said by people in now two meetings and, uh, I, I sure hope that you as a counselor are listening. Um, a lot of people don't like this. We didn't have any say. I'm sorry. I have a little baby with me here. Um, sorry, but we didn't have any say, uh, in this annexation and I was opposed to it back when I was living in the city and it was attempted a few years ago. And I'm certainly opposed to it now being a homeowner. Um, that is affected by it. I'm in zone one A. And, you know, some things that are clear is our little neighborhood is at the very, very end of the one A zone and, uh, it seems quite, you know, it seems apparent from the map, if you look at it, that a bunch of land, that is farms, is all gathered into the part to be annexed. And then this little bitty neighborhood with the forty-five houses is right there at the very edge of it. Um, there's not, you know, the school next door, Cars Farm Park, um, right next door as well. Neither of those are in the area to be annexed. Um, and so we, this is not something we want here in this neighborhood. We actually like being out a little farther. Um, I used to live in the city and now I live out and I much prefer it. So, uh, as you guys go forward making decisions, I just strongly encourage you to listen to the voices of the people who are affected by this that you've heard here. Uh, thank you all for your time.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Gafford, for your comments. Okay, do we have anyone else in the queue, Mr. Lucas?
Uh, no, I don't believe so.
Okay, and before we move forward, um, I would like to announce to the public that if we don't have any more public comments or people in the queue to speak, that at that point, then I will announce that this public hearing is closed before moving on to the next agenda item. Okay, in the meantime, I think we have someone willing to speak, Mr. Lucas.
Yes, I see a couple of new hands raised. First up is Dirk. And they should now be able to unmute.
The person's screen named Dirk, are you there and ready to comment? You'll need to you'll need to unmute yourself, sorry.
You you may need to disconnect and reconnect to the audio. It looks like you're unmuted, but we're not hearing you. So if you could try that, we can we can come back and I also see Betty Rose Nagel, who should also be able to unmute now.
Hello?
Hello, how are you?
This is Betty Rose Nagel. I live in the city. I attended the meeting in person for the brief period of time that it did meet last week. I went to be in solidarity with all the county residents who were opposed. I'm sure they're not all opposed, but all of the ones that seem to be talking and speaking here and expressing opinions are. I think I have heard a couple of people mention not hearing anything from us folks in the city. I am certainly opposed to it. I don't really see any advantage other than tax revenue to us. We need to get our own house in order in so many different ways that need more wisdom than they do money. All I agree with one of the people who spoke tonight saying that they have not heard anything about really what good it will be for the county. Lots and lots of things will be good for the city. This is where we need to grow. This is where we will develop. If we don't do it now, we'll stay behind. We're behind now. And I wonder behind what exactly. And I'm sure the person who says it could tell me, but and so just speaking as a person in the city, I am definitely opposed and I am in support of all the very much beleaguered folks out in the county who are feeling ill-used and mistreated. And I'm glad that they have banded together and resisted. Keep fighting the good fight out there. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Nagel, for your comments. Do we have any other takers, Mr. Lucas, or screen name Dirk able to speak?
Try again.
Thank you.
Still not still not hearing anything. I'm not sure if they're able to log out and log back in. And again, if there are any additional members of the public that wish to comment who haven't done so already, again, please use the raise hand function. You can find that either by clicking the participants button and then clicking raise hand. I believe for some mobile users, you'll need to click the more button and then click raise hand. I think under some folks' controls, it'll be under the reactions button. Or if you've called in with a phone number, you can dial star nine. Or again, if if all of that fails, please send a chat if you're able to to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to comment that way. And I will try try again with Dirk. Not sure I
Looks like I have another person in the queue. So go ahead. I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, yes. Perhaps Dirk can can try to log out and log back in while while we go to it's like a phone number. They should now be able to unmute.
Can you hear me?
I sure can. Can you state your full name? Then you'll have three minutes.
Certainly will. My name is Eileen Crane. I'm now on my husband's phone speaking to you. I couldn't make it work on my phone. So I just want to say that my husband and I live in the area too. We are located west of the Sycamore Land Trust land that started this program this morning, this evening, belonging to the Fries and the Bowies. And part of our High Point Lane neighborhood backs up to that land and the sleeper beans that offer no bridge to further development. There are 11 homes located on High Point Lane, and they're on approximately 25 acres. We are all on septic and have been told that the liability of our privately owned and maintained lane will not allow us to receive even trash pickup, but our taxes will still double. We live in the county because we love the country, not the pavement of the city. We don't need a park. Our kids could just follow the creek all the way to where trees were being tapped for maple sugar. We don't want all the problems of the city. And as an MCCSE teacher of 30 years, I am appalled that this annexation could reduce funding for our libraries and the school corporation and the RBB school corporation. I would advise you not to leave too early because you are not hourly workers. You are elected officials to serve hardworking people who voted for you, except for all of us who are calling you now. We did not vote for you and will not be able to vote for four years. Do you really consider that fair and American democracy? Thank you very much for listening. I'm glad I finally got through.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments. Mr. Lucas, who do we have next, please?
Not sure if we're going to have any any luck with Dirk. Let's try again. I'm not sure. I'm not sure that we're able to hear Dirk. Again, if folks aren't able to to connect to the audio, you are more than welcome to send written comments to the council office via email via letter, and we will make sure we'll make sure that that those comments are passed along to council members. I don't see any additional hands raised or requests to comment at the moment.
Okay, thank you. And before moving on, and I'm trying to pause a little bit so we can let everyone have an opportunity. Okay, I'll just wait before we're ready to move on for a second. I do see one now, Mr. Lucas.
Yes, Sarah Myers should now be able to unmute.
I I can't start my video for some reason, but my name is Sarah Myers and I live at Cars in the Cars Park Edition. And I'm really against this annexation because I really don't think that it's going to benefit for the us for the taxes that we have to pay for this. We have a great little neighborhood and we would just like to stay in the county. This is going to take so much money away from the county. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else, Mr. Lucas?
Not that I see at the moment. I do have a question from someone in the public asking whether emails need to go into the council office or can those be sent directly to council members? Yes, all of the council members have individual email addresses. The names and addresses for all the council members are on the council website. So please, if you'd like to share comments, feel free to visit the council's website and do so however you'd wish. And I'll try one more time with Dirk. I'm not sure if he was able to log out or if they were able to log out and back in. Still not still not connecting. I apologize for that technical difficulty. I don't see any any other requests to comment.
Hey, thank you very much, Mr. Lucas. And seeing no more members of the public wishing to comment before we move on to other agenda items, which is council scheduling next, then I need to announce to the public that this public hearing is hereby closed. Thank you. Now, moving on into the agenda, we will now deal with matters of council schedule.
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of quick items. Well, one quick item and then one item that we may need to think through. The PS Lit Committee of the Monroe County Tax Council has a meeting scheduled for this Friday at 11:00 AM. And I just wanted to remind the members of this body that serve on that committee that will be meeting virtually on Zoom at 11:00 AM. And for any members of the public that wish to wish to attend, you can find the the link to that meeting on on the council's website. Also, the council, now that you've wrapped up the public hearing, as President Sims mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, will be able to vote on the annexation ordinances not earlier than 30 days from the end of the public hearing and not later than 60 days. And given the proposals that are in front of you, the administration has noted that it may need some lead time to incorporate any changes that you all wish to see and make sure that those are reflected in the fiscal plans that accompany any annexation ordinances along with the maps and the legal descriptions. So what we've discussed is possibly scheduling another meeting of the council where you all would have an opportunity to make any proposed changes that you wish to see and act on those so that the administration has that lead time ahead of a final vote on what would then be the amended ordinances. So we need to you might want to consider picking a date to do that. And keep in mind that the departmental budget hearings are scheduled for August 23rd through the 26th, which effectively knocks that that entire week out. And I know Philippa Guthrie and our outside counsel, Steve Unger, are also on the call. So if there's a date you're looking at and you want to confer with them to see if that will leave enough time after for them to perform the work that that would result, I'm sure they'd be happy to chime in.
Hey, thank you very much. I'll in just one second, I'll call on Councilmember Volan. I see his hands up. And I will also like to include Councilmember Flaherty. As we move forward, there may need to be a motion to that effect. Councilmember Volan.
Yes, I have a point of order question. Today is August 11th, and we concluded the public hearing just a few minutes ago. Does that mean that the 30 to 60 day window is triggered from tonight or from last week? In other words, is the 30 day limit for the beginning of hearings of the ordinance as amended begin September 11th or September 4th? And do we have till October 11th or October 4th to make our final decisions?
If that was directed to me, it makes sense to me that the public hearing ended today. But I will forward that to our council staff.
Yes, our outside counsel can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe that the 30 days, 30 to 60 day window is calculated from the end of the public hearing, meaning today.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you. With regard to the meeting that Mr. Lucas discussed or possible meeting, the initial possibility of this with council leadership, we were looking at Monday, August 16. I only mentioned that just to let you know that that date is now not available. So it looks like the available dates take into account our budget hearings and not scheduling anything the Friday after or the Friday of the same week of budget hearings. It looks like depending on how many numbers or the majority of the council members can gather Tuesday, August 17 or possibly Tuesday, August the 31st. And I just offer those for your information and discussion pleasure, if any. Councilmember Scambler.
Mr. President, could we have perhaps Ms. Guthrie weigh in on the implications of those dates? I mean,
I'm sure if she's here and would like to comment on it. I think both of these in our previous discussions, even though maybe not direct, I was under the impression that either one of these dates would be workable. Obviously, the earlier the better from administration standpoint. But if Ms. Guthrie is here and would like to comment on that.
Or I see Mr. Rooker.
Or Mr. Rooker, if he'd care to comment.
Excuse me, council members. Michael Rooker, City Attorney for the city. I don't have my camera with me tonight. I apologize for that. I don't I don't have all the details. I see that Deputy Mayor Griffin is present. She may she may have more insight on this than I do.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Griffin, would you like to chime in?
Yes, as I recall, the the 17th, I thought the 27th or the 31st were times that were going to be available.
Well, the 31st, the 27th would be least preferable since will be the previous four days in budget hearings. So that was the least preferable, at least from our discussion.
Okay.
But I think the question is, is is either one of these dates compatible or acceptable with the administration with regard to having time to do some review and particularly with impact statements before the potential vote, which is scheduled for September 15. I think that's the question.
We can make either work.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Councilmember Scambler. Councilmember Allo.
Thank you, President Sims. Two questions. One is if we don't fulfill a if we don't dispose of these items within a 60 day window, what occurs? That's number one. The second is, are these meetings proposed to occur by Zoom?
We'll take two first, and then I'll let Mr. Lucas have number one. It is my understanding, since the governor extended is the emergency order that all meetings, at least until the end of August, will be via electronic meeting platforms. And Mr. Lucas can correct me if I'm wrong. And then, Mr. Lucas, if you could address that. And question number one of Councilmember Allo.
Yes, I think that's correct. The council is able to meet virtually through the end of the emergency declaration, which currently extends until the end of August. And the ordinances would need to be adopted by the council to take effect. So if you all failed to pass them, then they would not take effect.
And does that could they be brought up again? Or is that the is it a failure of the process entirely? I mean, what, you know, exactly what what would need to occur in order to restart the process, if at all?
I may need to lean on our outside counsel, Steve Unger, to answer that. I see that he has popped up on our screen and he may be able to address that.
Yeah, I think the the risk would be that you would need to start an annexation all over from the beginning as well, which would start with noticing up the public information sessions and going through the process that you started back in in 2017. With noticing up the public information sessions and going through the process that you started back in, in twenty seventeen.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Scambler.
Yes, thank you. I haven't heard any of our colleagues express a preference for a specific date. And so I will. A few of us have committed to a constituent event on the evening of the seventeenth. And if that would possibly push us to the thirty-first, it sounds like that's a day we have availability of clerk staff. Could we work around the seventeenth? Certainly if need be, but I would just offer that request. Scheduling this for the thirty-first would allow several of us to attend the meetings with constituents on the seventeenth. So, thanks.
Thank you for those comments, Councilmember Scambler. I think what that would require, you can check with Parliamentarian Flaherty, but I think to start that would require a motion.
I have a point of clarification to ask.
Yes, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, President. And so, so if, am I, do I understand it correctly? The parameters of the vote. Must take place. No sooner than thirty days after this date. But which leads us coming around September eleven. To. No, no later than October eleven. Guessing that that's sixty days. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
And you do know the vote is scheduled for September fifteenth for that particular meeting. Regular session, yes. Councilmember Sandberg.
As I am one that does have a meeting scheduled from seven to eight on the seventeenth. Do we need to hear from more council members about their availability or unavailability on that date before we have a motion to perhaps set it for the thirty-first?
I think I have, I see some hands held up, so let's get to their comments before we move forward with that. Thank you for asking. Councilmember Volan.
I don't have an obligation on that date, but I'm happy to make the motion to. Host a meeting on the thirty-first if people are ready for it.
Second.
Okay, thank you. It's been properly moved in second. Is there any this other discussion? I'm sorry. Go ahead, Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, if the maker of the motion wouldn't mind specifying a, a time on that evening as well.
Sorry, it would be at six thirty PM on Tuesday or it's Tuesday, the thirty-first of August.
Before you do that and clarify that, Mr. Lucas, did we talk six or six thirty possibility? Doesn't matter.
I think it's at the council's pleasure.
Thank you. And six thirty is his motion, which I think is fine. So is there anything else needed with that, Councilmember Flaherty?
I don't think so. I do have one other.
Has it been second?
Yes, it has. Councilmember Sandberg has. Yes, thank you, Councilmember Flaherty.
I just wanted to ask my colleagues. If anyone is unavailable to volunteer that information, just because if we're considering and voting on amendments, I think ideally having all nine members present is, is pretty important.
Okay, I see none indicating unable to attend on the thirty-first at six thirty PM. And obviously that will be via Zoom, being the last day of the month. Okay, any more discussion? Thank you. It's been properly moved in second, as you have heard. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Rallo.
Yes.
Volan.
Yes.
Rosenbarger.
Yeah.
Scambler.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Flaherty.
Yes.
Piedmont Smith.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
And Sandberg.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that motion passes. Nine, zero. Mr. Lucas.
Just a, just a quick point of clarification. I believe the health emergency extends until August thirtieth at the moment. We should. Hopefully know, leading up to that date, what the governor may plan to do, but stay tuned. We'll, we'll have to keep our. Our ears open and we'll certainly provide notice of that meeting ahead of time. So. The governor's only able to extend that thirty days at a time. So we're all, we're all waiting to see what he'll do.
Okay, no, thank you for clarifying that. And just for public and our colleagues, that meeting would have to be noticed by the previous Friday, if I'm not mistaken. So when it's noticed, we may have zero information with regard to whether the emergency order will be extended. Or not. So. Just so you know, I may be incorrect. You can correct me, Mr. Lucas, but if we notice it to be via Zoom. Not knowing what the, whether the order will be extended or not, then. It'll probably be held on. It's my understanding.
Well, we'll, we'll certainly look into it and provide plenty of advance notice for all, all council members and members of the public that wish to attend and. I, I believe those are the items that I had for scheduling discussion tonight. Thank you.
Hey, you're quite welcome. Okay, I don't think there's anything else on our agenda other than adjournment. So. I would accept a motion to adjourn. Thank you.
Okay.
It's been properly moved in second. Thank you all. Have a great evening. And we'll see you all soon. Thank you. And thank the public for the comments. I think it was very, very important this evening. Thank you very much.